Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and then welcome to the Monday, October 7th, 2016 work session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We're gonna have some discussion on the street cost recovery assessment collection process in the Endris Industrial Park. And there's been questions about this Shane. I know you have put in a lot of work to this. So we're going to just kinda go through and understand this. Craig, thanks for being here tonight. And Craig Atkins with the Watertown Development Company. If you want to come up and sit with Shane up here, I would appreciate it. And we can kinda go from there. And I think, I think folks that Craig has a lot of history on this. I know this is done before most of us were on here. So I'm just gonna open it up for you Shane, if you want to give us an idea of what's going on, why we're talking about this, and what's up.
Okay, thank you Mayor. You wanna put my, put the overhead screen on? Focus.
How far do you wanna do?
That's good. Well, you can pan out just a little bit. There you go. All right. So a little background, the Endris Industrial Park area began, we began improvement projects in 2009 and finished them in 2011. So there's three, three projects involved. Two of them were street projects and one was a sanitary sewer project. And essentially it picked up, the street was improved north of, of this general vicinity to some extent prior to those projects. And then as of 2009, this road was first extended over to this intersection with 26th Street. And a sanitary sewer projects came across the top of the back of these lots and came down as well. Then the 2011, the project was completed from the intersection of 26th Street all the way over to 29th Street. During that time, the city spent, I don't know how well we'll be able to read these numbers, but, good, thank you. The total projects costs just over a million dollars at that time. There was a street cost, storm sewer cost, and sanitary sewer cost. There was, for the sanitary sewer portion of the project, the city did get and utilize what was called state revolving loan funds. So that was low interest loan. And then that was about the time the economy kinda took a little bit of a hit. So the state did offer a 10% forgiveness on principal for a lot of those state revolving loan funds. So if you look at the column here to the far left of this spreadsheet, those principal forgivances were accounted for in the costs of the project that, so those aren't reflected. What we were forgiven for costs are not reflected in the $1 million. Those were deducted out before this project, or before the spreadsheet was prepared. So basically, you take this total project number, and we took the total acreage of the area that was benefited from it. And then we, we created a cost per acre and a cost per square foot. And then as the properties were sold off for further use by individual companies, it was presumed that we would be collecting those fees. And, and I think that was done by various methods. We either got, some of them were collected directly through Watertown Development Company. And I believe that one or two of them might have been collected directly through the finance office at the city. So anything you wanna add to that Craig?
Well, what I can do, I know that my office has been working with Shane quite a bit on providing some background on some of the previous purchase agreements. What I can do is, I don't, I haven't had a lot of time to look into this myself, but I can give you kinda the history of how we ended up, where we ended up, and kinda how these lots, the purchases of these lots took place. If you look at the lots eight and nine, those first two lots, the road and infrastructure that was in place already supported those lots without any additional work. So we just had a base price on those lots. And I think it was, at the time, it was around 12,500 an acre for two and a half acres. There was also an easement that ran back, kind of through the back third on the east side of those lots. And so as part of that discussion with the buyers, the city and development company agreed that, you know, we, we could live with a little, little less money on those properties than we might normally get. And so we looked at it as an opportunity to sell some property that might otherwise be idle. At the time, we didn't even have any consideration in mind about finishing the other road. When those two properties sold, then we started talking about the idea that, you know, if the city would upfront the assessment costs of that row, of those road improvements, put that in your capital improvements budget, that we could probably sell the rest of those properties over a period of time, which is exactly what happened. What we didn't talk about specifically was how the city was going to collect their cost for the infrastructure. And, and this is just recollection. So my recollection is, originally, the city went ahead and put this in its normal budgeting process, decided to go ahead and pay for it in the capital improvements plan. And we really, really, really beyond that, we didn't discuss until we had a first sale, what those land costs were gonna be. We actually sold a couple of those lots while the road was being constructed, and I can't tell you which ones exactly. And at that time, Mayor Williams and the previous city engineer decided that they needed to understand how much the infrastructure cost assessment should be on those properties. And so they came back with this 49 cents a square foot, which you saw in this piece of paper. What I can tell you, and without having the opportunity to go through this particular spreadsheet, is realistically, that cost with all, with all in, the cost of the land, the infrastructure improvements, roads, streets, sewers, for the entire road, so that would be from basically 23rd Street all the way down to 29th, was more than the 50 cents a square foot. The lot sizes, anywhere from two and a half to three and a half acres, made it almost prohibitive to develop those properties in a cost-effective way and turn around and sell them as industrial properties at, you know, 75 to a dollar a square foot, which was what those properties were going for at that time. And so after we talked to the city a little bit more, encouraged them to move forward with this project, they went ahead and did it. The mayor's office, along with the city engineer, and I think maybe at the time, there would have been a public works committee, agreed that the 50 cents a square foot or 49 cents a square foot assessment on the infrastructure would be adequate to cover their cost minus things that they were reimbursed for, whether it was through stimulus money or others, other resource, other sources. Now, every one of those lots is sold a little differently. It's not like a cookie cutter. Some of those assessments were paid upfront. Understand that when we sell those lots on the city's behalf, that's, Watertown Development Company really works as an intermediary. So we sell those properties. So it's a transaction between the buyer, the development company, and the city. The only thing the development company agrees to are whatever the terms are that are agreed to between the city and the buyer. So, you know, as far as how those assessments were collected, or, or when they were paid, we didn't really care from the development company's perspective, because we weren't gonna see any of that money. All we saw was 50% of whatever the base price per acre was, which started at 12,500, and I think is now at, I wanna say 16,000, 17,000 an acre, somewhere in there. So the whole idea was, at the time, industrial park property fully developed was selling for around 75 cents a square foot. If we'd have sold this for what all our costs would have been into it, it was gonna be somewhere in that buck fifty a square foot range, which would have basically made this land unsellable and undevelopable. And so the, the city leaders at the time, and somebody who were out on the council at the time, agreed that that was probably the best method or best way to, to move forward. This was an incredible gift from the Endris family to begin with. I don't know if you know the history, but this property was basically gifted to the city with the idea that we had to pay 3,000 an acre that went into a drug fund that was used, used to help, in this case, fund some of the drug dogs that the police department has had. We've sold all the properties out there, except for lots, well, it's, this map isn't exactly similar to what I'm familiar with. Lots 10 and 11, or lot, Lot 11 is the, I think the only lot, or lot, it'd be the C.
There's 11 for sure. And then a couple of these over along the.
So Lot 11, and then there's one lot over here, this lot C, basically, it's been replatted that, that hasn't been sold. So otherwise, you have, and I think that, you know, when you look at the background of that, that was, for the city, that was a kind of a unique thing, because in the past, you'd always required commercial or industrial development projects to pay for the infrastructure upfront. And one of the ideas that we approached you on was the idea that let's put some infrastructure in in some of these cases, knowing that we won't see it, but knowing that shovel-ready sites were important, and we bet that we'll sell some of these properties much quicker. And, you know, the reality is, with the exception of a couple of those lots, we filled that industrial park up in about four years. So, like I said, I don't have a lot of the detail. I know Michelle in my office has provided Shane with all the purchase agreements. And that explains, you know, when the assessment was paid. Sometimes it was paid upfront at closing, sometimes it was paid in installments. Sometimes it was paid based off of how the normal assessment process for the city would work on any other property that you might do an improvement on, and then reassess back to the ultimate owner of the property. So, I don't know if that helps, but I could try to answer any questions if anybody might have any for me.
It does help a lot Craig. And Shane, what I was questioning here, I've got a project description of what, what we had out there. There was $128,000 expected, and that was, is that the dollars you're talking that came from the 10% forgiveness from the state?
Well, the sanitary sewer project looks like it costs around $150,000, according to this project summary.
I guess my question is, is that Mr. Endris continually says that this was all stimulus package. And, and I need to understand this, the word stimulus, was that from the state? The 128 or 150,000 that was forgiven? Or what are we seeing?
In our case, it was only 10% of the principal of whatever that SFR, you know, state revolving fund loan was. It looks to me, based on the numbers I see here, that the, the loan would have only been in about that $150,000 range. So 10% of that would have been your presumed stimulus money, if that's what you wanna call it. I mean, really, it was just a principal forgiveness that those kind of ideas were run pretty, currently across, anything that had federal or state monies in it, they gave a lot of forgiveness back in those year, lean years during the recession. And I guess, taking the numbers that were there, and really, that was the only breaks for, on funding here. The majority of this million dollars was all funded from city funds. It, it really was. So we're looking at, you know, maybe, what, 10, 15,000 that wasn't recovered through either assessment, or included in there for recovery through the assessments, or through other, other methods.
Is there something you wanted to add to that Craig?
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, my recollection is that that was done in two phases. So you did a stretch of that 2010, 2009, 2010, and then you did the balance of that road the following year. And so, yeah, you know, I can't say with 100% certainty, but if there was any stimulus money added to that outside of your normal budgeting process, I wasn't aware of it at the time.
And, and my understanding is, is that this project, this road project was also included in the loan through the wastewater treatment facility. Is that correct?
Only the sanitary sewer portion had the loan on it. The rest of it was all financed, as, as I understand it, from Shelley that threw the city funds.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess I'll, I'll try to fill in the fine blanks that, that Craig's alluding to, as far as what we've been working with the development company, acquiring the, the data and the knowledge. And if you could pan out on, on to this side here, guys. So we took that million four and that 50 cents a foot thing, and each one of these lines across here represents one of those lots that, on the original drawing. So each line corresponds to one of these parcels here. And then, what we've done is take that, that information, and now, if you wanna pan back out to see this whole drawing. So this is those same properties boiled down to what we've collected and what we haven't collected. Everything in the green, these two on the top, these two in the middle, and these two on the bottom, and the one in the middle, nine, we've collected all of those. And so those collected dollar amounts equals 278,000. The total that we anticipated to collect was 866. The yellow line is a parcel that's still out in the county. And by our policies and, I think, state laws, we can't assess property that's not within the state limits. So, so that, that will not be collectible until that parcel's brought into the city. The pinkish colored ones are those that are in the city that remain uncollected. And then I wanna point out that part of the process that the Watertown Development Company did is as they were selling these lots off, they created in their purchase agreements, a provision, and I'll read it to you, that buyers will pay all costs associated with any infrastructure improvements necessitated by the development occurring on the above described property, whether those improvements occur on public or private property. So I have five signed agreements in my possession, and they correspond, or four of those correspond to these stars here. So those owners, I'll just use Lockwell Industry as an example, we have that purchase agreement that says that they'll pay for the public infrastructure. And that would include a unpaid assessment in the amount of $53,514.98 as an example. And we have that for each one of those four that aren't on there. The, I will point out that the majority of the other uncollected assessments are owned by members of the Endris family. So whether there was some special agreement that exempted them from something, I, I have no knowledge of that. But that's, that's the remainder of the portion. And I do wanna be clear, one of the key reasons that spurred all this research and, and, was this Lot 15. So Michael and Michelle Meidinger recently purchased Lot 16 and paid their assessment in the amount of $53,939.70 at that time. But that raised a question with some of the remaining properties around there, why, you know, there was some knowledge that somebody knew that some of the assessments weren't paid and some were, and, and.
Could we give you the purchase agreement for that one, for 15?
Yes. So, so this 15 also had the purchase agreement that should have included payment of the infrastructure in front of it. And that remains uncollected, and it's essentially the same. They're both identical sized lots, and one's been paid, one hasn't. So what I'm looking for is, or not even looking for anything, I'm providing this information to you as a council, and then hopefully, we get some direction as to whether or not we're going to pursue collection on the outstanding assessments.
And if I could just add a little bit more background, I think, from my perspective. So when you look at those years that are kind of in question, those were the years that we were discussing how to re, how to assess those properties. Our purchase agreements even allude to the fact that we all acknowledge that there might be some type of assessment. Nobody really knew what it was at the time, and we were trying to facilitate sales of these properties to folks that wanted to buy it. Specifically, in that Lot 15, I do remember in our discussions with the buyers at that time, 2009, that, you know, it wasn't an ideal lot. There was a part of it that was kind of on a swale. And so we, you know, kind of agreed to, to work with them on selling them that property, not knowing what the assessments were gonna be and things like that. From the development company's perspective, as I said before, we really didn't, I don't know if this is the right way to look at it or not, but once the agreements were done and the money, money was collected, we didn't really have any interest in following up ourselves or any requirements from our, from our perspective, on whether or not those assessments were collected. It was just our assumption that the city would then, however they would typically assess for those improvements, would go out and do that. And I would maybe say, in, in some of those earlier instances, that was just never followed through on. That's about the best I can come up with as far as an explanation. I mean, they're legitimately owed, but I don't believe that anybody followed up on it.
I think in hindsight, anytime we ever do another assessment project like this, it would have to be put on the properties and collected through the county, through the tax rolls. Otherwise, it's, it just, it gets lost in translation.
And I think that was the idea Mayor. I just don't know that whoever's responsible for following up on that did.
Unless they chose to pay it upfront.
Well, we use a, we've been using that word assessment here pretty heavily in this conversation. And in truth be told, these aren't actually assessments as such, because a true assessment has a certain procedure, and we're actually gonna see that later tonight in council. So a, a standard assessment, we, we would have to have assessment hearings and have all these owners come forward. And then, of course, there's a, an interest rate involved. This was all done without interest and not setting any parameters of payback, except for the expectation, as I interpret it, was that as properties would sell off and change hands, that someone was gonna collect a fee. And I don't, what I believe in my research is that, that someone was probably never really truly identified. So the, the Watertown Development Corporation probably didn't know, or, or as Craig said, you know, they, they weren't concerned about collecting them. And then somehow, on our end of it, the city's end of it too, we just, we're, we're busy going forward and didn't look back to, to make any collections. So I, I, I'm not, this whole exercise was never to exude blame, it's to seek direction on how, how do we wanna recruit this if we're going to.
And I think if you, if you look at the transaction history, it's pretty clear that you can see three kind of transitional phases of how that land was sold. The first two would be with, with clawson construction and cabinet concepts. Then the next series would be those that were 2004 to 2009. And then after that, you know, 2010, 2011, we had a pretty consistent formula in place to make sure that the city was reimbursed for those expenses. And so, you know, Shane said, I, you know, I can't tell you why those assessments or those, those improvements weren't reimbursed or weren't, you know, passed on to the county for collection in the property tax rolls. Our interest was only, from the development company's perspective, to, to facilitate the transaction. In some of those cases, those purchase agreements or purchase offers came from the mayor's office, and were negotiated between the mayor and the buyer. And we didn't know anything about it, other than, can you please do this for us? And we've done that before, you know we have. We've done that on projects recently where we've, you know, helped to facilitate a land transaction between the city and, and a, and a commercial buyer. So we didn't question necessarily. And the basis of these agreements were really legal documents that were drafted by the city, and then our attorney would, would kinda make sure that our agreement with the buyer was consistent with what the city had agreed to sell it to us for, if that makes sense.
I got a couple of questions. Were these improvements already done on all these lots at the time they bought them? Or were some of these improvements done after they purchased the property?
I would say it's about 50/50. Anything that was done before 2000, there were no improvements in this vicinity before 2009. And after, there was a series of projects by the end of 2011 that had finished it out. So the majority of the improvements were done in that three-year period. And really, ideally, you would have began, if we would have went traditional assessments, we would have developed this assessment procedure in 2011 or 2012, and they would have been on tax rolls and collecting these assessments, probably with an interest variable included in it, as per our ordinance. And then we would just, would have been collecting these over time through the tax rule.
Well, I guess what I'm alluding to is if I bought an unimproved property, and then those things got put in afterwards, I would expect I would owe for them?
Yes.
If I bought a property that was already improved, and thought I had a deal made that included that, and now you come back and say, well, you didn't pay for this, that's two different things to me. Am I wrong with that?
Well, every property within the community should pay for its first-time improvement.
But I, I don't disagree with that. But if, if the purchase of the property was done after the improvement, you would assume that these are those costs were in there, or be told that there's a bill outstanding for it. If, if you bought the property prior to that improvement got done, you know you didn't pay for it, 'cause it wasn't there before.
I would, I would say, maybe with the exception of the 2004 transaction with clawson construction, where I believe all we did was, was provide water, a water line, because that road was actually surfaced, hard surfaced, all the way to the end of the block. The water and sewer may not have been there at the time, but, but that was a, I don't know, the city, you know, you had asphalt when you put the road in, you finished it all the way to the end. With the exception of that one, and maybe the Coystonin lots, though, the infrastructure was either in place or being put in place as those properties are being sold. So in most cases, those buyers were aware that they were gonna be paying an assessment, or paying for the infrastructure, and that was either spelled out in the agreement to a specific dollar amount, or to a process as to how that would have been collected once that dollar amount was determined.
Just for clarification, the purchase agreement at the time of sale for clawson construction did also include the language for paying for infrastructure improvements. So even that property back in 2004 was identified that if and when the streets improved, that it would include a, a investment on the buyer's behalf.
That, that one seems fairly forthright to me. I mean, improvements weren't there, you know you're gonna pay for them. My question comes in, ones that later the improvements are done and they buy it later. We had this 50 cents in there. Is there some assumption with that 50 cents that they paid for everything? And is that 50 cents already deducted from this?
Okay, I, and I'm not gonna, Craig can clear up what I don't, I guess. There were one or two purchases in, that are shown on this list in the green, that some of them included a final cost that included the improvements, and others did not. And I think, for the most part, all the ones in green that came later, the improvements were included in the closing costs. In other words, they paid a base fee to Watertown Development Company for how many acres they, they purchased. And then there was the 50 cents a square foot fee added to it as part of their purchase. And I believe, and I, and I'm not trying to isolate anyone, but I believe this Lot 16, that that's likely how that, that amount was determined and collected.
Did you say that 50 cents, though, doesn't cover the total cost?
Well...
50 cents already deducted from this?
Okay, and I'm not going to, Craig can clear up what I don't, I guess. There were one or two purchases that are shown on this list in the green, that some of them included a final cost that included the improvements and others did not. And I think, for the most part, all the ones in green that came later, the improvements were included in the closing costs. In other words, they paid a base fee to Watertown Development Company for how many acres they purchased. And then there was the 50 cents a square foot fee added to it as part of their purchase. And I believe, and I'm not trying to isolate anyone, but I believe this Lot 16, that that's likely how that amount was determined and collected.
Did you say that 50 cents, though, doesn't cover the total cost?
Well, that was my impression originally, okay, was that when the city looked at their original costs for that infrastructure, it was much more than is reflected on the spreadsheet. I just, you know, that's recollection, there's nothing, you know, that I have that documents anything any differently. And so we kind of agreed that that 50 cents a square foot, even if it wasn't going to collect, even if it wasn't going to cover all the city's expense, was a fair cost to provide that property at a competitive rate. I will also tell you that the city took criticism from other developers for selling some of this property, 2004, 2009 in particular, because we were selling it for much less than other industrial property might be going for in smaller lots. The reason was, we were just selling it at a base price with the idea that, oh, you might owe some money later for infrastructure improvements. So it wasn't, when you really compared apples to apples, these lots are very, were very competitive with any other lot out there that would be used for a similar purpose, even in 2004.
When was 7 and 12 purchased? There's no date there.
That was part of the original Endries Farm, and I alluded to that earlier, that they actually owned the land before the projects and still own the land today.
So if you look at this map, this is just my recollection, Lots 12 and 13, 12, 13, and 14 were never part of this transaction, or if they were, there was something that was done before my time. And then in 15, 16, 17, 18, and the rest of those were all part of the Endries gift for this industrial park back in, I don't even know when you guys did that, 97 or something like that, so.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, I think. So it was quite a while, so the city had that land for quite a while before we'd ever did anything with it.
I guess I'm confused here. Okay, Craig, you said there's no doubt that, and now we would know those dollars, that that money is owed, but from a practical standpoint, do we have any way of collecting? I guess I'm asking you, or Shelley, or Justin, I mean, is this all water under the bridge at this point, or what recourse do we have at this late juncture now?
I won't, I'm not going to put words in anybody's mouth, and everybody can certainly clarify that. But I would say that with the purchase agreements that we have, if they've identified public infrastructure to be collected, that we would still have an opening to collect that. I don't know if there's any statute of limitations on that, Justin, that we would know.
I'd have to research that more specifically, but, you know, insofar as it's a contractual obligation, and if it's one that runs with the land, you know, that is a thought there that it's an ever-present obligation, but I'd have to do more research on it to give you a definite answer.
Have any of those properties changed hands so that the original party would have agreed to that and the next guy didn't even, isn't aware of it? There's nothing that you know of there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Just to not stick my neck out too far or anything, but if some people paid 50 cents, why don't we just do 50 cents on the other?
Well, because the improvements for a couple of those original lots wasn't that much. I mean, the cost wasn't that much. I will tell you that in probably all the discussions, whether I was directly involved or not, with these landowners that ultimately bought these lots, that there was a discussion about what the assessment potential would be. And that in a couple instances where we didn't know exactly what that number was, we worked with Shane's predecessor, with city engineering staff, to kind of come up with a ballpark number so we could provide that. And we would do kind of a, you know, negotiated deal where we would say, well, we think it's going to be, you know, 49, 50 cents a square foot, but we can't tell you for sure because we don't have the final numbers in, but we don't think it's going to be any more than. And that's how, in each of those agreements, we ended up agreeing to either a specific number or, you know, here's what, you know, or at least you acknowledge that you, as the buyer, will be responsible for that cost in the future.
Maybe you already said this, but you mentioned that the estimate was 49 or 50 cents. What is the actual cost? What's the updated estimate?
Well, the only document I had in front of me was that one that we showed here. Those are the numbers on how the dollar amounts that, in my view, some were collected and some were uncollected. And so those are really the only, that was my focus of the research, was to figure out that part of it, not dive back into the history and try to figure out why other people made other decisions, because I really, I really can't read through that.
I think his question is more, when you charge it, was it 50 cents or 49 cents?
I believe it's 50 cents.
Well, my question is, at that assessment level, will it or will it not cover the cost to develop the infrastructure?
According to the spreadsheet I have, that's how it was calculated. So 50 cents should cover the million for.
The people that have already paid the assessment, paid it at what level? 50 cents, okay.
I guess we have already tasked Justin with kind of looking into the legal obligations of some of the contracts and assessments and signed agreements. But as I was looking at the previous chart, the one with the pink and the green, you know, it occurred to me that five of those, there we go, kind of scooched over to see the stars on the sides. So we have five signed agreements for assessments that weren't paid, and so I think I'd like to really explore that, the cost parts of it and everything. We can work with people who know what they're doing there. But, you know, as I look at this, we're leaving right now, we're leaving over a half a million dollars on the table, if you look at the two numbers. Do you see that? And that's not making me happy. So, you know, I don't know what we can do to bring those numbers closer together or to bring some of the people who have the signed agreements into compliance, or, you know, those are the things that I sit here looking at thinking, why don't we have the money?
I'll get you up in a minute, Bob. Hang on just one more minute, okay? Other questions for Shane or Craig while they're still up here? I guess we didn't have to wait that long, Bob. Craig, thank you for being here. Shane, if you'll hang on tight. Come on up, Bob. Come right up to the microphone, or we can give you a microphone here to use, and if you'll tell us your name and such for the record.
My name is Bob Endries, and we own some of that property, some of those lots that I'll allude to later here. But I think we're missing the whole point of really why we're here and how we got here. It seems to me like it was pretty hard to know what the rate was out there. You're saying now it's 49 cents, it sounds pretty clear. But when I recall what happened when the street went in, because I lived there, because we owned lots, several lots, four lots, so it made a big difference to me. And when they said there was a stimulus money, I thought, you can't believe I'd be that lucky to get a street out of the stimulus money. And that was my first thought. And as the time went on, and they constructed the road and put the sewer in, they just hard-surfaced it, the road was in earlier. But as all that went on, there was never a meeting like normally, when you put an improvement in the neighborhood or someplace, you normally will have a meeting of the landowners, and you'll tell them what you're going to do, you're going to tell them what the cost is, you're going to ask them, do you want to write the check out? Do you want it on assessments? That's a normal procedure. And that never happened at all. There was no contact, no landowners did nothing. Now, if we go down the line there, it's a little misleading of who really paid and who didn't pay, as I see. I'm only really actually talking about the first stretch that went in, part of 23rd Street, and it turned a curve there, and 14th went up to where Walmart has a holding pond there. Now, that's all I'm going to address, because the other street was part of a whole different agreement.
Can you show us that, Shane? Put that on the screen, what he's talking about.
I'm only going to, I'm only talking about Lot 7.
He's talking about?
I'm talking about Lot 7 and the concrete products. That's where it started, at Lot 7, you see the line in there. Okay, that was not, we never had any meeting there. A is Clausen's, they never been contacted at all that a street was even going in. Never a word until I spoke to him here three weeks or three months ago. That's, A was Coystonin. He did pay a couple of years later. He got a statement in the mail, and he paid 42,000 bucks, he told me. Number 10 is the Flamboos. He paid assessment because he was buying his property when the street was going in. 11 was Laku. Laku was there, and he never got any assessment. 16 is a lot that really, why we're here. 15 is Miteger. And he paid, he never paid any assessment on 15. I never paid any on 13 or 14, and Joe never paid any on 12. So what we're talking about is kind of a fact here that only one assessment has been paid in six years. Not half of them or not most of them. There's only one assessment that's been paid, that's nine, he paid a couple of years ago. And all the while, it leads me to think that it was still stimulus money. I think it was stimulus money. The reason I think it is is because I didn't just wake up one morning and say, I think this is stimulus money putting this road in. I heard it. I heard it on the radio or I read it in the paper. And the second thing is that no meetings at all, that you always meet with the landowner. So why meet with them? It was the government's money, you need no meeting, just put it in. We knew nothing about the street. Nobody knew anything about it. You just come out and start building the street. And third is, if there's $500,000 missing out of the treasurer's office, how in the world does anybody account for that? Now, it was before you. Don't look at me like that. It was before any of you guys, really, because, you know, when I first called Stanton Fox, when I look at Justin there, when I first called Stanton Fox, I said, Stan, I don't think this is right. You're charging for assessment on Mike's lot out there, which would be 16. I said, I don't think that's right. And Stanton, if I can repeat, he isn't here, but I think I can tell it the way he said it, he said, oh my God, he said, and I didn't want to screw that up. He said, I talked to, I think I don't miss, I don't think I missed a person in the street department. And I asked him, was that stimulus money or not? I thought, gee, Stan, I'd have just walked over here to the treasurer's office. But where were all these numbers when I asked Stanton? You know, they all been created, all these numbers have really been created since I raised the question, was it stimulus money or not?
I will clarify that. All of this research and all of these documents were done way back in 2011, so that's not true.
Okay, well, I certainly stand correction, because I don't know that I made a true statement. I don't know when they were created. But it seemed to me like nobody was talking about stimulus money, nobody was talking about recovering this 500 grand. Nobody said a word about it. It would have just passed if I hadn't brought up the question. Mike paid on 16, and I don't believe he should have. And that created all this here. And I'd still like to know how $536,000 could be missing out of the treasurer's office. Now, I'm certainly not a secretary or a treasurer, or a bookkeeper, I should say, or know anything about it. But, you know, if you wrote a check out to the contract for $536,000, if you wrote a check out for $536,000, and you didn't have an assessment coming in from Endries and from Miteger and from Clausen's, then the books don't balance. There's a $536,000 hole in the audit. So it was stimulus money. So I just say to you guys, I feel that my first thought was stimulus money. I didn't hear nothing when I seen it and heard it on the radio and seen it in the paper. Secondly, we had no meetings at all, that isn't the way it's done. Well, it was stimulus money. Thirdly, there was no assessments. Why? Well, it was stimulus money, and there's no hole in the treasurer's office because it was stimulus money. So you're really not losing $536,000. You just got 530, you really have collected from a couple of people that I would think would be unfair.
I have a question, I guess, and that, sorry, Craig. Why would the other people have paid that? Why did the others that did pay not believe that this was stimulus money?
I believe that every single contract would say that you pay for assessments. You agree to pay for the assessments. I'm sure they all say that. But if there's no assessment because it was stimulus money, there was no collection. They would have paid it. If they would have sent them a bill and said, okay, here, we're going to put the street in, it's going to cost X numbers of dollars, this is your share, everybody would have paid. But somebody's, the city's expected me to come up with $230,000, $40,000, six years late, you're asking, oh, Bob, we want these back taxes or assessments that's been six years ago, and we'd like to have you pay now.
What would be interesting, though, and Craig, you can step in, I don't understand why we would have taken out a loan for one point X amount of dollars. If it had been stimulus money, we would not have had a loan, am I correct?
I don't imagine you would have, if you took a loan out to do it.
You know, the only thing I could add, is this working? Okay. The only thing I could add to this is, I do, and I'm, you know, I don't want to muddy the waters up probably any more than they are, but I do think that we didn't really, in our discussions about these assessments, any of the property that was already privately owned, so for instance, any of Bob's property or Joan's property, I don't think that they were probably ever approached about them having to pay an assessment. I don't think that they would necessarily be on the line for paying for those assessments, because we decided that was how some of the cost was negotiated, because, you know, if you remember, I told you that my recollection was that the land cost or the infrastructure cost was actually higher than 50 cents a square foot, but that was just a number that we all agreed to. Now, unfortunately, I, you know, wasn't responsible or didn't track those numbers, so I can't tell you if there was a different number out there. And the set of numbers we're looking at were after other funds were maybe diverted to it, or what may be the case. Lot 16 specifically, though, I can tell you because of when that happened, that was identical to any other property that sold after 2010. And that assessment was clearly part of that property and clearly part of the agreement.
Craig, I'd like to add to that discussion, because your point's right on, I think. But the other ones, these ones that I had starred on this sheet, those are the ones that we have agreements that dictated that we would collect the assessments. If you notice that the privately-owned or previously privately-owned Endries properties are not included in that list. So I think there's a clear, there was two clear processes that were going on. Everything that was sold before 2009 had these agreements in place that they would pay for the infrastructure when they were put in. Everything after that is essentially in the green, and the Watertown Development Company's been collecting those as those properties sold. And those were primarily after the 2011 improvements, or somewhere within those projects. So I think that there's a distinct cutoff between 2009, what happened before that, and what happened after that. And the only thing that's left in the gray, I'll say, is the formerly-owned Endries properties and the concrete plant are the only ones that really fall into the no-man's land. The rest of them look like they were fairly clearly defined as to how they were intending on collecting or pursuing those.
You've got, what, three green ones that don't have any assessment? Or two? What's? There's one green one up there for Stroms, that doesn't have any.
You're looking at the wrong column, I think. All of these in this green side in this column are collected. This just didn't show a date in here for a purchase date, but the assessment was collected.
But number 18 doesn't have any number in it, that's green, as best I can tell.
That one was included in the total purchase price of the... That one was included in the total purchase price of the, of, in other words, their, their assessment was collected through the lot sale. And didn't get reflected as a separate collection, if I remember it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. Yep.
But it is past what we're talking about. They have all paid. The street was in. They were either paid for it or they're on the assessment roll. There's no question about, about McKeever or Wicks or, there's no question at all, Stimson. All those, they were all aware of it. They got their tax statement and either they paid for it or they were, had the assessment. That's got nothing to do with what I'm talking about.
No, I think actually, if I can interrupt for a minute, all of those, since two thousand and eleven, we knew what the assessment was. And so in the purchase agreements, we specifically outlined what that cost was. And we either collected at X closing or had an agreed upon date to collect it. So anything prior to that, we were a little bit in what I would consider a gray area because we weren't exactly sure what those assessments would be on those lots. So that would have been that two thousand and ten, eleven, or two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten timeframe.
But there was verbiage in the contract, so...
But there was verbiage in the contract that said, once we knew what that was, you would agree to pay for it. So specifically, any of the property that the city owned and that they sold to private developers, the property improvements is due and payable. Any property that was not part of the city, I don't think you have any ability to necessarily go back and recoup your costs on those infrastructure improvements.
I have a question. Stimulus dollars, were there stimulus dollars actually attached to this? Specifically to this? Did we have any stimulus monies at a point in time that were...
Let me just answer.
In other words, were there, was there anything earmarked for this?
No. Basically, the stimulus that was talked about here, at that time, they were through the SRF program. And that's actually water. Clean water or, you know, which is storm water or sanitary sewer. And so we did a great big, our SRF nine project, which included five different projects, which included the sanitary sewer for this street project. The rest of the money came from the second penny sales tax and it was a street project. There is no stimulus money for streets. There's no federal funding for streets. That's why we get the highway bridge money. That's the tax back that we're supposed to use for, for street projects and then our second penny. So there was, when they talked about the city getting stimulus money, like he said, about a hundred and fifty thousand of it with the ten percent principal forgiveness. And the rest is a loan that we're paying off over twenty years back to the state. The rest is a regular street that was taken out of the second penny sales tax and paid for out of that. And we do have all the records that show all the payments that were made from that. And then based on that, it was brought through the engineering department to come up with a cost recovery method. And, and, you know, from there, that, that's the information I know from what my position was back at that time.
So the sewer, so the sewer projects are not a part of the assessment? Is that correct? Because of the stimulus or am I wrong?
They are, but the...
Less the ten percent that we got forgiven.
So the part that was forgiven, the ten percent principal, was reflected that they, it's not included in the assessments?
And if I could add to even Shelley's comments, from a budgeting standpoint, at that time, the city used to dedicate, I want to say a hundred and fifty thousand a year annually towards industrial park improvements. And you kind of rolled that money over from year to year. And that's specifically, I think, where that second penny source came from to pay for tho, to pay for that initial road improvement.
And am I, am I correct in believing that these properties were sold at what a lot of folks would have thought would have been less than market value? To help with the burden of the assessment? Is that correct?
Well, I think we ended up in a situation where that's the perception was that we were, you know, the, you know, if you'd read it in the newspaper here down the press, you would have heard that we approved a purchase agreement for twelve thousand five hundred per acre. But the reality was, it was twelve thousand five hundred per acre plus whatever infrastructure you might have to pay for when those roads, water and sewer were put in.
They're talking about the sewer and stuff and it doesn't even go down Twenty-third Street where I'm talking. The sewer comes down Twenty-third Street to about there. This goes backwards, I guess. It goes about to there and then it goes, it goes... Can you run it?
No, I got it.
It's a little hard. But it, the sewer almost cuts off everything again that we're really talking about tonight. I'm not talking about fifteen.
But all those, but Bob, all those lots are serviced by sewer.
No, they're not.
I mean, yeah, yeah, they are. All the lots the city of Watertown sold to private developers has sanitary sewer service.
I don't have sanitary sewer.
But yours was never owned by the city.
Yes, it was owned by the city.
Which lot?
Eleven and twelve.
But, but those were, those were not part of the original Endries Industrial Park. You guys kept those lots as part of that transaction.
That's not true, Craig. We gave that, we gave that, twelve, twelve we kept, thirteen and fourteen, we gave to the city. And later, later it was a purchase that we bought it back from the city. And, and that's for a fact. You can take that to the bank.
Right, I agree, but that was prior to the industrial park being created.
No, you created industrial park when we gifted the land.
And so you gifted lots twelve and thirteen?
That's true.
And then you bought them back?
No, twelve we never, twelve we kept. Thirteen and fourteen, we gifted.
And then you bought them back?
Then we bought them back. And we bought them back almost the same way. We really shouldn't have, you know. The mayor told us that we could, could farm that, we gave, we gifted the land. And the mayor said we could farm it as long as, as long as it wasn't sold. They said we were digging gravel in thirteen and fourteen. They said we could continue to take the gravel out. It actually was improving the park because there was a hill there. And then all at once, they were having a big concern in the city that we were taking gravel off the city's land. So I said, well, we'll just buy twelve, we'll buy thirteen and fourteen. So we gifted it one year and two, three years later, we bought it back. And we wrote the city out a check for twelve, thirteen and fourteen. And that's how that happened.
And I, and I would agree, that's probably how it happened. But, but what I would tell you is, when that was put together as an industrial park, master planned by the city and the infrastructure improvements were started in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, those lots were never considered part of the park because they were already privately owned. So my guess is, and I don't have the exact dates, but my guess is that transaction where you bought those lots back happened before two thousand and four.
Well, the Cabinet Concepts, I guess they run their sewer with the lift station and does Clausen do the same, I suppose? They probably do the same.
Just leave me, leave this here for a second, please. This is Twenty-third Street, North and South. This is Fifth, whatever.
You're on target.
Fourteenth Avenue.
Make sure you got your mic on, will you Shane?
Sorry about that. Okay, so the north-south piece is Twenty-third Street, this, or Twenty-third Avenue. This is, or Twenty-third Street, excuse me, and Fourteenth Avenue. This is, I believe Clausen Construction is one of these two lots. Is this one?
Yep.
Okay, and this is the McKeever property, correct?
Cabinet Concepts.
Or Cabinet Concepts, okay, Cabinet Concepts. Clausen and then, so the, the portion of the sanitary sewer that received the revolving loan funds is this piece that's shown here in the back lot lines. Then after that, everything, the sanitary sewer was run down the center of the road. So that's how the sanitary was done. This was a, one of the three initial projects. The other two, and just for clarity, this is the, the first project was done, what's shown in green here. Then it was that sanitary sewer project that we just looked at. Then in two thousand and eleven, that was the green there. Minus this piece right here was put in in two thousand and eleven. So those are the three projects we're talking about. That's how all of these costs were generated and how they were calc, they were calculated off of these three projects. So for clarity, I mean, that, those were essentially the projects. There is sanitary sewer and full utilities all the way along that entire route.
Shane, can you pull that assessment sheet back up?
You want?
The one that shows?
This one?
Yeah, so, you know, those two lot, they're not on there. The Integrity Tool and Die lots, for example. So prior to all of these improvements being done, that, that property had already been sold. So that would be similar to how lots twelve and thirteen and fourteen or thirteen and fourteen were sold back to Bob. Lots twelve, those lots that are Integrity Tool and Die were sold prior to any of these improvements. And they don't pay, they're not paying any assessment on those improvements, even those, those improvements were done in front of their property as well. So I guess if that makes sense, that kind of explains the transition from when, when Endries took the two lots back to when the rest of these properties were sold as part of that industrial park. They were just separate land transactions with separate terms. So there wasn't any kind of carryover from, you know, the sale of Lot thirteen and fourteen to Lot fifteen or to the Integrity Tool and Die lots. Because those lots, so I've been with Watertown Development Company since two thousand and three and all of those properties have, have been outside of that city-owned industrial park prior to that time. So, and really, none of these transactions happened prior to two thousand and three. So that, that we're specifically speaking about in terms of who owes assessments and who doesn't.
Well, what got us here was the fact that I thought it was stimulus money. I thought sixteen was collected improperly by an accident, just that it was wrong. And that's what got us here. But if I'm wrong, then someone tell me and you'll all understand it very well. How do you account for the five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar hole in the treasurer?
I'm not an attorney, I'm not a developer and I'm not a realtor. But common sense tells me that each and every one of these properties should have a purchase agreement, correct? And does each and every purchase agreement have some kind of stipulation to the assessment to it?
Sure.
It does, it does, Randy. It just says that, you know, that they, that they're responsible for any current or future public assessments to those properties and they all acknowledge that when they, when they purchase that property.
That should be pretty simple then.
So the issue is not whether or not there's a hole in the, you know, you're missing money. You're not missing money. It's just never been collected.
We're missing that piece of the pie, is why it was never collected.
You're missing money because you wrote a check out to the contractor, the city did, for five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And the books indicate nothing that there's any assessment put on the property. There doesn't say this, I mean, if they would have come and wanted the assessment from me, I may have wrote out a check. It doesn't account for that. It doesn't account for an assessment. They don't audit the books with purchase agreements. I mean, where is the assessment at? It was never put on. It isn't on yet today. It isn't on yet today. It's just that it might go on tomorrow. And I just think that, that the city, if nothing else, I say it was stimulus money. There was stimulus money floating all over. South Dakota got nine, ten million dollars or, yes, they got nine or ten million dollars of stimulus money. I heard Watertown got stimulus money for shovel-ready project and I'm, I'm dead set that it is. And how would you account for the hole in the budget? Because there is a hole in the budget.
Now, just out of curiosity, don't we have a loan out for this?
Yes, we do.
So how is that a hole? If we owe the money?
You have to pay the loan off with some, it don't matter if it's loan or you took it out of the cash. You have to, you have to account where this money's coming from. How are you going to pay for it? Oh, it's coming from an assessment from Endries. It's coming from a check from Miteger. That accounts, that makes the books balance. But you got a hole in the budget, no matter how you can, and, and this would have never been brought up if I hadn't, hadn't thought that Miteger was charged and he paid and that I thought that it was kind of unfair that he, that he had to.
And what I could, what I could do to maybe try to clarify that again is just to explain that none of those properties that were, that were already owned by individuals outside of the city were intended to be assessed. But you still did the improvements and so they in fact did get a deal. They got a deal because their property was improved and they didn't have to pay, they didn't have to pay for the improvements. The only people that paid for improvements were the people that would buy that land from the city of Watertown through the Watertown Development Company from two thousand and four on.
Okay.
It's just trying to...
Any other, any other quick questions that you have for, for the gentleman? We could, we could argue all night long about stimulus and I apologize, Bob.
But we always get off the point, I feel, if I make one more comment because nine is...
One more, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Nine is the only one that had its assessment. Well, when you sit down and write out an assessment for nine, pray tell me why you wouldn't write out an assessment for the rest of them? Why didn't Clausen's pay? Why didn't Midwest Motor Freight pay? All right, so the concrete plant was in the county. I mean, I just don't understand how anybody, I mean, we can say, oh, it wasn't stimulus money. You know, you might say, I didn't get out of bed this morning. But I'm here, so, you know, I must have got out of bed. And I don't see how you could end up with a hole in the budget. And I just can't see it. And how come only one that got an assessment was nine? Why does, all that is, is one person out of eight or seven, eight lots, only one got an assessment two years ago.
No, I don't, I don't think that, fill me in on that Craig, because, if you would, because I think there's more than just one we're charged on that.
All of, all of the, all of the properties agreed, you know, all of those properties agreed to pay the assessment. Whether or not the city or the county that collects the property taxes implemented that collection process, I mean, that's really what it is, is it was never implemented. The collection process was never implemented. So it's not a matter of whether or not they did or didn't agree to pay for the, for the improvements. They did. That's clear in the purchase agreements. It's a matter of whether or not, at the administrative level, those improvements were ever paid for. So what happens, and you've all been there, is you get a statement every six months that says, here's what you owe plus your assessments. And you either pay it or you don't. And if you don't pay it, it's up to somebody to collect it. Now, I can't tell you what happened specifically with Clausen's, why they haven't or have. But, you know, Coysterman was a stand-up guy. He paid it as soon as he got it. He was aware that he owed it.
I think what we'll do is, is take a look at the Public Works Committee. Or if we shouldn't get them together and have more further discussion on that. We can do that. Can we not? Why not?
Wouldn't assessment like this be registered to the county? Correctly? Shouldn't it be registered to the county?
So we use the word assessments a lot. It's not an assessment. This is a, all the land that was donated to the city was sold off in chunks to various individuals through the Watertown Development Company. Each and every one of those off properties that were optioned out for sale included a cost recovery dollar amount. And basically, that's what we've been showing you tonight. The difference is, is that the ones that were in the green, that all happened after two thousand and eleven, were clearly collected. The ones that have the stars by them that are in the pink were transactions that happened prior to two thousand and eleven and just simply haven't been collected yet. So really, in my opinion, the whole part of this process that we brought this out is to get input on whether or not these are collectible, recoverable dollars.
Shane, as I see it, boiling down to two, two basic questions here is, one, I mean, I, I share your concern, Beth, I mean, geez, I mean, are we, are we out those kind of dollars to the city? But I guess it's a question of, do we as a city have the, and I'm not sure if I do myself necessarily, do we have the appetite to go back and try to, all of a sudden, try to collect something from somebody that has no idea what, that they might owe something? But secondly, we can't ignore this. I guess I would definitely like to see us go back and try to find out, you know, what our recourse is if we do want to try to pursue this. if we do wanna try to pursue this and find out what our options are at this point.
That's why I asked the question about purchase agreements. I mean, that gives us a way whether or not it's- it was an agreeable purchase.
If I could just, I mean, if I could just add to that, I guess, you know, from my perspective, and again, I'm only talking about things that have happened since 2003. You have purchase agreements in place on all of those properties. They owe you that money. They've agreed to pay that money.
You know, I can't- I really struggle to believe that the city of Watertown, had- had there been stimulus monies to cover all this, would even entertain the idea of trying to collect it, if that's the case. And I think we've established the fact that there was stimulus money and what it was for and sort of a dollar amount. So, so, I think it's fair to say that that was not, I mean, this was not paid for with stimulus money. I believe that.
Well, I- I respect that. I've been told that before, that- that it probably isn't stimulus money. But then, you have to count how- how you can have a fifty- a five hundred and forty thousand dollar hole in the budget.
Right, okay, let's move on. Are we going to... We're not gonna act on this tonight, Shane. But I do think that it actually needs more entertainment. We need to look at this and come to a conclusion of what we're going to do as a city, so...
And that's exactly what I wanted.
Yeah, and I'm gonna leave it at that for now. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. Okay, I do have a couple of future items that we're going to put on. I was hoping to have a little time tonight, but I don't. One will be to talk about the mall. We have a meeting October 25th. Just so you understand that, I believe we have two council people that will be in that meetings, if I'm not mistaken. Any two of you guys?
Three.
Three?
Well, there's...
I'm looking for names right now.
Myself.
Okay.
Mike and Don.
Okay, perfect. So, we have three folks that are gonna be sitting in on that meeting. There'll be all the stakeholders from the mall are involved. There'll be Justin, myself, and just numerous people there. So, we'll look forward to that, see kind of what's going on and what we're looking at. The other one that I know I don't have time for this evening is, I would like to move forward with getting a retail strategies, a retail coach, or Buxton. I wanna bring some information in front of you folks. We've had this conversation about bringing in retail to the city of Watertown. And I think the clear choice is out there, but we really don't have time right now. So, that'll be coming to you at the next work session, okay? Any other questions or comments before I adjourn this meeting?
I'll email you my long list of future agenda items.
Okay. Put it on the list. Very... Okay, at this time, I will adjourn this meeting, and we'll be- we'll be back at seven o'clock for the council meeting. Thank you.